Okay, here we go.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Belvedere City Council Regular Meeting of September 17th. The clerk will call the floor.
Borowitz.
Here.
Alderman Brooks will be absent. Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Alderman Freeman will be absent. Porter. Radcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Please stand and pledge allegiance or remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for our many and abundant blessings. We are grateful to be involved in useful work in the honor of bearing community responsibilities. As our city council gathers this evening, grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and appropriate, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. These things we ask in your name, I would also ask you all to join me in a moment of silence for the following citizens who have gone up yonder this last week. Michael McCarthy, Carl Domont, Richard Fuller, excuse me, Celestia Matheson, Paul Meyer, and Judith Anderson. Thank you and amen. Under public comment, we have no one registered with the clerk to speak this evening. So first up is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvedere City Council of September 4th, 2018. As presented, may I have a motion to approve?
Approve that.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Borowitz.
Abstain.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Under public hearing this evening, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, we have none this evening. Next up, under approval expenditures, first up, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,064,745.34. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Sanderson, may I have a second? Second by Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
General and special fund expenditures are approved unanimously. Next, underwater and sewer fund expenditures. May I have a motion to approve $440,563.05? Motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Water and sewer fund expenditures are approved unanimously. Brings us to number eight. Committee reports and minutes of city officers, please note that items A through I have been received and placed on file, which brings us to item J, minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, and zoning and public works of September 10th, 2018. Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of motion will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under nine unfinished business, we have under A, ordinance 423H, a second reading. An ordinance amending section 10-37, prohibited employment of the city of the Belvedere Municipal Code. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford. May I have a second, please? Second by Alderman Radcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of ordinance 423H will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Abstain.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Motion is approved. Under new business, under number 10, notice that items A through E are first readings, which are silent readings, but I'll read them into the record for those people watching at home or listening on BNS Radio. First is ordinance 424H, an ordinance designing a landmark to the local historical register concerning Hotchkiss House at 427 Pearl. Ordinance 425H, a first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150 zoning ordinance of municipal code, small wireless facilities. Ordinance 426H, a first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit accessory outdoor storage within the planned industrial district at 675 Corporate Parkway. Ordinance 427, first reading, an ordinance approving a replat titled Plat 5 of Sager Corporate Park. And ordinance 428H, a first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit indoor commercial entertainment within the planned business district at 2195 North State Street. Next up, under F, we have a resolution. Your Honor. Excuse me? Alderman Sanderson.
What about ordinance 423 unfinished business?
You just passed that. Huh? You guys just passed that.
This one you abstained at.
Oh, I was abstaining. Changed my vote. Yes.
So that would make it 8O for ordinance 423H? So how'd you vote on the minutes?
No, he didn't.
Oh, you were abstaining on the minutes. Okay. Just so we get it straight for the record. It's okay. Resolution 2084, 2018 is a resolution approving an extension for expiration of a special use ordinance 273H pursuant to Section 150-904K of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code. May I have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second. Second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Sanderson, then Alderman Stevens.
Well, we'd like to see this guy get his project finished, but this has come to us quite a few times. I'm wondering if we maybe could hear from the owner if he plans to adhere to the stipulations on this resolution, if possible.
Is your comment somewhat the same?
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask if the attorney was fairly happy with everything that he had, with all the POs and all the stuff that he said he was for the overhead canopy and all that, if that's all in order? He said he had it on order.
I have not received anything from him.
Oh, okay, I thought he was coming to you. Never mind.
Nope, did not. Well... Jerry, would you like to come up? So, I'll open it up to questions from the council.
Hello, everybody. Hi.
How are you? So what specifically would you like to know, Mr. Sanderson?
Well, I remember you coming here before.
Correct.
And, you know, we wanted to see you get your project done. It's been a long time, I think since 2015?
2017.
Seventeen, okay. I thought it was fifteen, that's since the extension was seventeen, wasn't it?
Yeah, I've been working on the fifteenth, so there was open then, so...
So what's holding up the project and what, have you looked over what the city attorney has written up as far as consequences if it isn't done?
Yes, I did.
Did you accomplish that?
I'm gonna do the best I could to finish, try to before that, but what, one thing right now is holding is the permits for the fire marshal. The day I got it, maybe tomorrow, maybe end of this week, they usually take two to three weeks. We applied for like ten, more than 10 days ago. I got a canopy orders, I got the pumps, I got everything else. The building pretty much, Lisa might have the pictures. It's a, probably, I can guess 95 to 90 percent is done. Walking coolers there, everything's in there. All we need to do concrete is outside and put the piping.
Lisa, does that sound feasible to you to get this stuff done, or does that sound accurate to you?
I, I see some pictures here. I did not go out. It was Jonathan Landers that went out today. He met with Jamal on site, and he has quite a bit to do. He would then, I mean, he's got exposed insulation, he has no trim. He has flooring in. Coolers are in. I don't know, do you have exit lighting in and emergency lighting?
Lighting's there, everything's there.
In order to pass a final inspection, though, you have to have your site 100 percent finished. Your surfacing, your parking, your landscaping, at which point Gina would come out and inspect. And then we would need to have plumbing inspection, electrical inspection, fire department inspection, and then our inspection.
Correct.
So, you know, that, depending on how quick you work in there...
Final inspection, you meant, say?
I did, I did issue a canopy and pump permit. So he has that. Is it on order?
The canopy's ordered, the pumps already, we have it. So, I'm holding on right now for the fire marshal permits to take the old piping and put a new one underground.
That, that really, does that affect the installation of the pumps or the canopy?
They do, they do.
Okay, so how about surfacing the lot? I mean, could you do that and meet the deadline?
See, when we gonna take the can, the piping out? It might be a little big dirts there that we cannot use. We have to get the permit first for the fire marshal. Then fire marshal guy's gonna be there with the sample. He's gonna tell us how much need to go, how much stay.
Okay.
And without that, I cannot do anything on this.
Well, I, I think that you definitely could be working on the inside of the building. I mean, this is in no way ready for a final.
Inside, it's a door trimming's left, drop ceiling's already there, and, sorry, drop ceiling's there, framing's already there.
What about the drywall? There's exposed insulation.
Yeah, drywall's already done.
I have pictures of it.
Only one because the storage room, I don't have to have a drywall there.
Well, this, this has a flame spread. You do have to cover this.
So, that's, that doesn't make, it's not even take two hour to finish that.
Okay.
It's only...
These are the things that you should be doing, though, at this time. Do you have signage on your bathrooms? Do you have all your handicap fixtures?
Handicap fixtures already there.
Okay. Exit lighting, emergency lighting.
Lighting's there.
Fire extinguishers.
Fire extinguishers, I can go get it.
Okay, but the, what I'm saying is you could be doing this while you're waiting for the state fire marshal.
I can't, see, Lisa, this, whatever's there, to me, it does not gonna take one week. I can do it tomorrow. I can start doing whatever's left, that's okay. If, if that's what you want me to do.
That's exactly what we want you to do.
Time period then, from October 31st?
Well, can we, can we increase it a month?
Well, yeah, you said it could be done in a week.
That's what I ask. No, no, whatever she, see, she's seeing the pictures.
I'm teasing you, little Jamal.
I'm just answering her. What she's seeing is the back room, there's all the sodas, everything's gonna be stock. It's not a framing. It's already framed, but it's not drywall.
But it has to be.
Alderman Sanderson.
Yeah, so Jamal, I think the councils tried to work with you.
They do.
And, you know, the, you gotta look like you're, you're doing, there's some fancy stuff in here that, you know, aren't gonna be fun.
No, it's not, not.
And also, other people don't always get all these extensions.
Correct.
That's what we have to take in mind, is to be fair to the rest of citizens, too, so I hope you work hard.
Other people's not poor like me either.
And not think that everything's gonna be done in a week, and you start making some progress on some of the things that are building.
No, I, I have a guy work a Friday, Saturday last week. I've, I've been doing them one by one. I didn't stop doing it. I understand what Lisa, Lisa said I should do it every day. So, now on, I just do whatever's left. I gotta, I can even name it. Door trim, there's a back room, 10 by 5, it need to be finished. There's a sign need to be hang up. There's a drop ceiling need to be hang up. There's a little bit electric left to do that, and I will try to do that.
And then if you would schedule your plumbing and your electric and your fire department inspections?
Correct.
We can get those out of the way. The only one that cannot come through is my department, and that's because we issue this certificate of occupancy. So I can't have your gravel lot, it's gotta be surfaced with parking, handicap parking stalls. And, and everybody else has, has had to already have gone through. So these are things that you can be doing ahead of waiting for the, for the fire marshal.
Got you.
Alderman Stevens and Alderman Snow.
I got a question for Al. Who on our inspection bureau is working on this? Maybe you can get them to call downstate and put a little fire underneath the state to see if they can bump this just a little bit for us?
Lieutenant Wilcox will, some, is probably who I'd have called down there, so, yeah. We could, we could look into it tomorrow.
Alderman Snow.
And if we could, could we have the attorney give us a nutshell what the generic outline of this resolution, so we all are on the same sheet of music?
So, as the council's aware, the situation, if a project is not done, whether we grant the extension now or it doesn't finish by the, by the end of whatever extension you agree to, it's not good for either party. I mean, the city's in a bad position, you've got a lot that's not complete. And the owner's in a bad position because he loses his special use, has to do significant demolition, and faces fines. We've granted an extension once already. This is the first time since I've been here, I recall, we've done two extensions on a project. So the idea of the resolution is really just to formalize it, put it in writing, so that we're not thinking, who said what, when? So that's the reason I put in resolution form. It provides, and by the way, Alderman Sanderson, you're correct about that 2015 date. That was the day of the first ordinance granting the special use. It was in 2015. So, three years ago, almost. The resolution provides that we are granting an initial extension to October 31st, 2018. That is so that the owner can complete everything on the site with the exception of the canopy. Now, I realize he probably not be able to get a certificate of occupancy at that point because we won't be able to issue one until everything's done. But certainly, the building department and the fire department can walk through and say, but for the canopy, we're ready to issue. If everything except for the canopy is done by October 31st, then we've granted us basically an extension till November 30th of 2018 to finish the canopy. And that was based upon the owner's assertions last week that he has to order the canopy, it might take a little while to come in and get it put up and things like that. Then comes the bad things. If he doesn't make that first, October 31st date, there is no further extension. The extension terminates that day. If he doesn't make the November 30th deadline for the canopy, there's no further extension. The extension terminates that day. In either event, he loses his special use. At that point, he'll have to bring the property into compliance with the City of Belvedere Building Code and Zoning Code. That's gonna be extremely hard for him to do. The only way to come, uh, compliance with our zoning code will essentially be to demolish a portion of the building. Because frankly, part of the special use granted him some deviations, some basically variances on setbacks and what have you. It will also require him to pay a hundred dollars per day in fines from September 30th, which is when the current extension expires, until whenever he gets that stuff done. Frankly, I could probably put in more, but a hundred dollars a day times two months, you can do the math, it gets expensive real fast. The last clause provides that if we have to go into court, he's gonna pay our cost of litigating against him, including our reasonable attorney fees, whether that's my time or if we end up hiring somebody else to do it, which I'd do myself most likely, but my time, to reimburse the city for my time doing that work. I emailed him a copy of this document this morning. Apparently, he didn't check his email or see the email or get the email, so he received a copy of this. That's about three minutes to seven this evening, so I don't know if he's had a chance to look it over in great detail. But the penalties for noncompliance are severe. The penalties for noncompliance are the same as if he didn't sign this agreement. They're what's in our code. Additional questions, comments?
So everywhere, I'm the one?
Yeah.
I know.
Alderman Borowitz.
Looks like you got a lot of work to do here in a very short period of time. Are you able to get this done? Do you have the funds to complete this?
If we have everything, yes, but the reason I keep saying the last time, and no, everybody look at me, I like I'm joking, I'm not. I have, this time, two months, it's not too much and not too less. But depend all on the fire, uh, fire marshal permits. If they still didn't give me two more weeks, I lose two more weeks. I particularly asked last time, too, if I get it to December 31st, but it's not gonna happen, so I have no choice.
Jamal, you still haven't shared with us any proof that you've actually applied for those permits. I believe the Alderman asked you to send me copies, specifically Alderman Stevens asked you to send me copies of your applied for permits as well as the invoices for stuff you purchased.
I did email it to you the other day, whatever we have done.
Check my email again, but I didn't.
Huh?
You gave me a list of what you've done.
Yeah.
But you didn't give me the permits that you applied for.
No, it's on there, we applied the permit. I can get you.
It's a doc, document?
Yeah.
That you filled out?
I can't do it, it's only the petroleum guys, he did it, but I can get that from him.
Please do.
Can you call it? Can he call him? Maybe we get it now? I should.
You can just chat to me in the morning, Jamal.
Okay, I will.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
And I guess, Jamal, I gotta tell you, I, I would seriously doubt that you would meet the 31st deadline, even if everything goes sweet and kind. I personally think, based on everything that I see of the plan, the site, and the pictures here, if you were a tradesperson that was on top of all these, I still think you would have a difficult time meeting these deadlines. And I think you're gonna be in a world of hurt when all this stuff starts accumulating and you're looking at a hundred dollars per day, and that counts the weekends, I assume it's a seven-day week, so things are gonna rack up quick, and then, then we're gonna be in the quandary of your building not being in compliance and jumping through all those hoops. So, I wish you luck, but I think you're gonna be in a world of hurt.
Yeah, but...
Alderman Snow, are you suggesting an amendment to the resolution and change the dates?
No, I'm not.
I was, I was asking everybody if, if you guys think over it, if it's possible to change the date to December. But I will try my best to meet that date, but if it's a little extra, I should have a little extra time. That's all I'm asking. I know it's my fault. Everybody know me, and I don't do it to this purpose. I don't want this lot to look like junk. I wanted to make it better, so that's what I'm trying to do. And my only suggestion right now, asking everybody's, please, if you guys decide to give me extension 31st October, it can be, if you guys can change it to 31st December or 30th December. Then, like, you thought it's the last time, somebody else thought it's the last time. I thought if I got everything, it might be, I put people work more and more and more, try to get it done. But if everybody have a thought, I'm just asking everybody, please, if it's possible, get me the 31st. Then, I do my best. I still do, I still gonna do my best. I don't wanna lose 200 dollars, a hundred dollars a day, starting as December 30th, that's to October 30th, that's $6,000. And then, two more weeks, it's gonna be more. And attorney's fees and this fees, it's, I'm gonna end up losing everything. But that's the only thing we all have to think. All, I'm not asking one year's. I know I was here last year, too, when I get extension, I was asking a year, but we got it done in nine months. But all I'm asking, that's the last time. If you guys think over it, to, if I can get it to December 31st. But still, I will try to do way before that. If the permit comes soon, I'll be done sooner. But 31st has to be 31st December.
Well, you agreed to November. Right?
No, right now is everybody's thought, that's why.
Well, everything we talked about, and you've not signed this yet either, was that you have two, you have two deadlines, and the last deadline is the end of November.
Correct.
So, it's really a moot point in talking about December.
I got one more question.
Yes, Alderman Borowitz.
The black topping, do you have that scheduled to be done?
Black top, I'm, I'm gonna do the con, the concrete.
Concrete?
Yeah. All, all, just like other...
Well, you can't black top the concrete all year round in this city.
No, no, the black top already ordered. The stuff is...
Delaying the time of the concrete, we don't do that, I wonder if there's all these sort of time that we can actually lay that. There's a deadline, they can't lay it, but it gets too cold.
See, 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 one thing's every, I'm sorry, one thing everybody's not getting. If I have a permit from fire marshal, for example, tomorrow, which one is not happened? Because it's been 10 days to apply. They take a two to three week. The day that we got the permit, we gonna have stalled the piping. Piping's already ordered. Is it, company calls, Chicago Anderson Pumping, they have it. They gonna deliver it the same day. Take three to four days to put the piping in. After that, if I even got a permit for one week later, from today, and then within same week, they do the piping, we gonna start doing the concrete, we gonna start finish a hole outside. Outside's not gonna take more than four, five days.
The application for the state fire marshal, does it require documentation from the City of Belvedere in any respect? So what documentation is required for that?
They require whoever certified people for the petroleum. They fill it up the application and it's ended them, so then they respond. I cannot get the permit, city cannot get the permit. Only the guys whoever certified with the petroleum. So, he already apply for it. So he already apply for it.
Jamal, you said that, first time you said, you said it takes ten days and two weeks to get the permit. Just now you said two to three weeks to get the permit. I'm not sure which one to believe you on. But the, but, you said you applied for the permit when?
Almost ten days ago.
Ten days ago. So you applied for the permit on September tenth, approximately. Even it takes them a month to get it done, four weeks. That means by the first week of October, you've got your permits approved. You said it takes you maybe five days to get the piping in the ground from that point. That takes you up to maybe October tenth. We're giving you to October thirty-first. So what's the problem?
Take me everything up to, this, 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 we can go there. We can go anywhere. But all I'm asking, if something delay, if which one, I'm, just think a positive, but nothing's delay. But if something delay, that's why everybody's here, and I'm only asking ninety days.
Well, you've had so many extensions on this thing.
And if it's not gonna happen, then I deal with it. If you guys not decide to give me that, I have no choice.
Well, this pretty much represents what we're all gonna give you.
I know. Everybody, see, I'm not doing this purpose. I wanna open to get money, move on. I'm not just be, I don't wanna be stuck.
So the next step would be the council to approve this that was in your packet, and for him to get it back to a sign that he's accepted it. He could sign it right now. Yes, Alman Snow?
Well, and would the mayor be willing to, like, if we make a motion to allow you the authority to extend everything thirty days, if you see enough progress being made and enough good faith effort on his part, would that be an appropriate deal to potentially help this get further along if things happen?
You mean to go from November to December, the end of December?
I'm more concerned about the October thirty-first deadline because I think, and having talked to Lisa, the canopy is its own animal. And if that doesn't...
So what you're saying is he has to have it all still, all done by the end of November? But you want me to, you wanna transfer the responsibility for him not being done by October and giving him till the end of November on all of these items? To my yes or no?
I'm asking if you would be willing to?
Would that be the wish of the council?
Would be appropriate if...
Or do you want it to come back to you guys?
I think, I think you have a... I think you have enough knowledge and enough insight and enough...
And I think I'd be very happy, too.
We can rely on you to go out and look and say, hey, you know...
Show of hands, who wants to transfer the responsibility to me? All right, so it'd be appropriate, make a motion then to amend the resolution to provide...
No, I can sign it.
In subsection A, after the word department, in the one, two, three, four, fifth line, the mayor may grant an extension in his discretion.
Thirty days?
That's only on the October deadline. Just so you're clear, we're not talking about giving you another thirty days past the end of November. If he is satisfied... No misunderstanding?
But the canopy.
No extension, all done by the end of November. By circumstances beyond his control. So, what I've drafted, I think I can break this machine.
Is this an amendment or what?
Yes. The amendment would be to add a new sentence in subsection A that provides the following. The mayor may grant an extension in this discretion through November thirty of 2018 if he is satisfied that charter is delayed by circumstances beyond his control. And this is with everything but the canopy.
That's good. That's good, thank you.
This includes having the canopy done by the end of November. This is not giving you another thirty days past, no matter what. You're still getting November thirty deadline. You've still gotta get it done, and I don't know what you need to do to get it done, but you need to get it done. So we have a motion by Alman Snow for an amendment, as read by the city attorney. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all those in favor? Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Horowitz?
Nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nate? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Aye. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Yes. Something. If that canopy wasn't here, is there any reason that he couldn't open the store part of that and just say it wasn't here? Could that happen?
A certificate of occupancy will be issued, provided it's one hundred percent complete, the store itself and the site. So if there's an unsafe area, that's gravel with rebar, and, you know, there's no pumps, there's no canopy, then no, there would not be a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Ken?
Okay, now we have, the amendment is passed. Now we need a motion to approve the amended resolution.
We have that.
Okay, so we're good?
We have to vote.
All those in favor of the amended resolution, roll. Who are you pointing to?
I just wanted to, since the vote is to extend it to November, Jamal, I highly suggest you call the paving companies in town to see how late into the year they'll pave to, so that you, if this goes to November, you can't say, oh, all the paving companies are closed until the spring, I have to wait another six months to get paving done. So call to see what your deadline for that is with those companies.
Okay.
And Jamal, to be quite frank, you know, for as long as we've been given the extensions and stuff, generally speaking, generically looking at the outside of the building and the whole site, very little has been done. Now, you can say you did a bunch of work on the inside, but based on the photos, everybody'd be hard set to say that, yeah, there's been a huge amount. You may have some freezers in there and things like that. But to be quite frank, I think you're gonna have a heck of a hurdle, and I wish you good luck. And I think the construction cycles and things that really need to take into account, you're gonna need to be on it and get as much. And you're probably best off trying to hire outside people to giddy up on it.
Correct.
All those in favor, the resolution is amended. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Horowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
The resolution as amended is passed. So if you don't have what you're supposed to have done by the end of October, you need to come see me before the end of October.
Sure.
And let me know.
I will. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up, we have motions forwarded from the City-County Coordinating Committee of July eleventh, twenty eighteen. Motions will be presented by Co-Chairman Snow. Co-Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. A, a motion to approve invoice number two-nine-one-five-two-eight from TRC in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents with a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county.
Motion out of committee. Questions or comments for the discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of passage of the motion, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Horowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
B, motion to approve invoice number seven-one-two-five-six from Wilson Electric in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars with a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, those in favor, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Horowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
That's all, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Co-Chairman Snow. Next, we have motions forward to committee the whole building, planning and zoning and public works of September tenth, twenty eighteen. The motions will be presented by Vice Chairman Stevens. Vice Chairman?
Motion to approve change order number two for the wastewater treatment plant sludge thickening project in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. This work will be paid for by the sewer depreciation fund.
I believe it's seventy-four thousand.
Well, I thought it's seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-six.
Thank you, sir. Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Horowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?